Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Board of Education. The meeting is called to order at four P M. An open session. Tonight, we do not have requests addressing closed session agenda items. At this time, the board will recess to closed session. Open session will. I'm sorry. Roll call.
Ms. Armstrong?
Here.
Dr. Elhassan?
Present.
Mr. Cretchfield?
Here.
Mrs. Garza?
Here.
And I, Ms. Stewart, am present.
Now, at this time, we will, the board will recess to closed session. Open session will resume at approximately six P M. Welcome back, everyone. Tonight's meeting of the Board of Education was called to order at four P M. An open session, and the board then adjourned to closed session at four P M. We will now reconvene the meeting in open session at five fifty-nine. Board Clerk Amy Stewart will update us on closed session topics.
Good evening. The topics discussed in closed session were pending litigation and anticipated litigation. No action was taken. Thank you.
Replacement pages. Do we have any replacement pages tonight?
No replacement pages tonight.
Thank you. Public comments. Tonight, we do have one request addressing a agenda item. While the meetings of the governing board are not public meetings, they are open to the public. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item, and the board will limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty-one minutes as per Board by Law ninety-three twenty-two point two. Can we please have Angela Givon come forward? I'm sorry, can you state your name just so I can pronounce it correctly?
Angela Givon.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, President Garza, board members, Superintendent Droudi, principals, and school staff, parents, students, PTA members, and friends. My name again is Angela Givon. I am a current PTA member and parent volunteer. On behalf of Bellflower Council PTAs, I would like to thank the B U S D School Board for adopting the resolution for drug-free schools for prevention and educational programs in our district. This resolution recognizes the National Twenty Twenty-Three Red Ribbon Week theme and our local B U S D celebration. The Twenty Twenty-Three Red Ribbon Week theme is be kind to your mind, live drug-free, and will be celebrated at our schools October twenty-third through thirty-first. Parent volunteers and students at our campuses are busy creating red ribbons, signs, posters, pledges, and displays to actively portray our commitment to living drug-free. Our PTA units are sponsoring special assemblies, bringing in guest speakers, hosting fun events, and engaging student activities on the campuses like dress-up days, crazy hair days, be silly days, et cetera. This resolution acknowledges our commitment to continue promoting healthy lifestyle choices with positive lifelong conscious decisions to eliminate alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs within our communities. We know a drug-free, healthy mind leads to good decisions, which leads to better homes and schools. The Bellflower PTAs would like to encourage all community members to participate in this celebration with us, October twenty-third through thirty-first, by wearing red each day and by posting a red ribbon at your business, office, home, and vehicles. We love to see red everywhere in our communities and supported the theme be kind to your mind, live drug-free. Spread this good news to all. The Red Ribbon Week celebration will culminate Friday, October twenty-seventh, with distinguished community members boarding a district school bus, our former Red Ribbon Trolley, to visit schools to view red ribbon displays. We are looking forward to this fun-filled day. Additionally, Bellflower Council PTAs would like to thank the school board members for your membership and our PTAs. We also encourage all parents, high school students, teachers, district staff, and other concerned family members, community members, to join your students' school PTA. Our goal is one hundred percent parent and family participation at our schools. Please visit our website for more information. And again, thank you so much for your support as we continue in partnership with you to serve the B U S D community. We serve to strive, outreach, advocate, and renew B U S D families. Your Bellflower Council PTAs.
Thank you so much, Ms. Givon. Could we please now have Deborah Bias?
Thank you. Thank you for your time and attention. My name is Deborah Frenes Bias, and I am back. I'm reiterating some points from the last meeting. Thank you for the counselor position at I L C that is being worked on currently. We still do not have laptops at home. It's less about the laptops for our family than it is about pointing out to the fact that more resources such as an assistant principal are needed. Principals are already stretched too thin. People power is a problem. Another case in point is our caseworker has done her best at contacting the district multiple times, and she has not received any response. And Dr. Droudi had said that uniforms for incoming students from Washington, that they would be provided. There has been no response from the district, and she only works part-time, so, and she really is trying. Whether it be more hours for her or another caseworker, I think it would be really needed. And again, Dr. Droudi, please, our hope is that, you know, if something is said, it's potentially not just to quiet the families and to assume that the school will clean up and take care of everything you promised. She is working tirelessly and on part-time hours. The need for sweater and jackets now is here for a cooler mornings. At Washington, we were able to use jackets and sweaters of any color. Dr. Droudi first said that uniforms would be provided. You did not originally say only for those in dire need, and I quote, later you did change your verbiage to dire need. First of all, do not do that. Do not change your verbiage to change who is deserving of less expenses, but for something that is really was unexpected last minute, and it's really not okay to use the word dire need later on in the conversation. Either way, there are folks who need and have multiple kids. Dr. Droudi, keep your word, please, and A S A P, considering the changing weather. We are a month in now. Class sizes. Last meeting, I said I was okay with bigger class sizes. However, after listening to the teacher who spoke last week and having more weeks during under our belt, I'm not okay with the big class sizes. However, it just real, it's not ideal and it's not excellent. Dr. Droudi, you promise excellent teachers and education at I L C. Please do not add more students to the dual program that are over twenty-five or twenty-six students in a class size. Yes, even for upper grades. Our fourth grade classes are at thirty-one and thirty-two. Please invest where it matters. More teachers for next year, at least, to make classes not only manageable but excellent. L A U S D, for example, invested in teachers. They have sixth-grade classes, just one example, with eighteen students. That allows more groups, individual attention, so much more room for excellence. We know the studies and articles are out there. I know you know them. You can find them. I understand class reduction is not inherently going to allow test scores to go up. Teachers matter, so be happy I'm not there yet. So why are you making this more difficult for the teachers? And not to mention the academic and social emotional well-being of the students. It's not just about test scores. My son is not in school just to produce a good test score, although he does. Thank you very much. What happened to the whole child, by the way?
Thank you, Mrs. Bias. And if possible, would you please also include your phone number so I can give you a call back? Thank you. Okay, let's move on to amendments to the agenda. Do we have any amendments to the agendas, this evening's agenda?
Yes, yes, we do. I'm requesting, there's two things I'm going to speak to. The first is I'm requesting that we move the Bellflower Unified School District Foundation Discussion Item to new business. Their rationale is the following. Although I am very interested in establishing a district-wide foundation for many reasons, and my intent was to bring it and discuss in the spring. However, we do have a board member that would like to bring this up to start discussions now. And as per protocol, this should come under new business, and the board decides on whether we want to discuss it in a future meeting because it was initiated by a board member. So I'm requesting that we move this item to new business so that the board member can ask by bringing it up for future board meeting for discussion. That's item number one. Item two is just a grammar change or spelling change. Also, there's a misspelling on error agenda. Item fifteen point two, employment of certified personnel on school staff on the second half of page ten under the assignment column. The word assessment is misspelled as it is missing an S for misassignments. Do a student assessment. So those are the two different amendments to the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Droudi. Do I have a motion to approve the amendments to the agenda?
So moved.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Elhassan?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Cretchfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
We move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, our principal at I L C, Ms. Almata, will lead the flag salute. Welcome, Ms. Almata.
Thank you. Good evening. Please rise, face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Almata. At this time, we will invite Mayfair High School alumni and class of twenty-twenty-three, Ms. Stella Lynch and her father, Austin Lynch, to come forward and administer the ceremonial oath of office to Ms. Stella Lynch. Go ahead, come around and come here in front of the dais. Congratulations to both new student board members. Welcome to the board. Board, can you please join me down in front of the dais to take a picture along with our new student board members, please? We move on to presentations from staff, students, and community. Principal at I L C, Ms. Almata, will share an inspirational message and the highlights of this month's bulletin board. Welcome back, Ms. Almata.
Good evening, President Garza, members of the board, Dr. Droudi, cabinet members. I'm Mrs. Almata, principal at the Intensive Learning Center, and it is my pleasure tonight to present the inspirational message. Learning is like a bountiful harvest. It requires patience, dedication, and hard work. Just like a farmer carefully tends to their crops, it is important for parents and educators to cultivate a love for learning in all students. When we invest in our students' children's education, we're sowing the seeds for a higher, I'm sorry, for a brighter future. Similar to a farmer that must carefully choose the right seeds and plant them in fertile soil, educators must provide students with a strong foundation in reading, writing, and math. As students grow and develop, they need to be challenged with new ideas and concepts. Just like a field must be rotated to avoid depleting the soil, students need a variety of experiences to keep their minds engaged and continue to grow. As the crops begin to grow, farmers continue to nurture and care for them. Same for parents and educators. We must provide students with support and encouragement. When students struggle, it is important to offer them a helping hand and guide them through the challenges. It is important to offer them a helping hand and guide them through the challenges. I said that already. By providing a safe and nurturing environment, we can help students to reach their full potential. Finally, when the harvest is ready, the farmer must gently gather crops and bring them to market. In a similar manner, when students are ready to move to the next level of their education, we must help them to transition smoothly by celebrating, acknowledging them for their successes, and offering guidance as they face new challenges. We can help them to thrive. In conclusion, just as a farmer must tend to their crops to ensure a bountiful harvest, parents, educators must cultivate a love for learning in all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almata and I L C. It's time for our student board reporters presenting Bellflower High School. Representing Bellflower High School is Trista Peterson. Welcome, Trista.
Mrs. Garza, can we go back to the bulletin board just real quick?
I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm sorry. It was my fault. I am very proud of our bulletin board, a harvest of great reading at the I L C. We had a group of teachers working. I'd like to recognize and thank my leadership team and cultural committee, and especially Mrs. Rivera, who was the lead of this bulletin board, and she's going to go ahead and present.
Good evening, President Garza, cabinet members, Dr. Droudi, and staff. The power of reading and learning is something that can never be taken away. It is a gift that can be given to oneself and continues to enrich a life for years to come. Reading is not just about gaining knowledge, but also about expanding the imagination, discovering new perspectives, and exploring cultures of the world around us. As the I L C Eagles cultivate their reading and learning habits, the teachers also instill that it's not always about how much is read or how fast a book can be finished. What matters most is the quality of the reading experience and the depth of the Eagles' understanding. The teachers guide the students to take time to savor each page, reflect on what has been learned, and apply it to themselves. Learning is a lifelong journey, and it doesn't stop after a formal education. Our students are encouraged to keep seeking out new knowledge, challenging themselves, and pursuing individual passions. With each new book, we read, and each new skill acquired, students become stronger and more confident. As Margaret Fuller once said, today a reader, tomorrow a leader. B U S D, keep reading, keep learning, and keep growing. The world is awaiting for each of you to make your mark, and the more you cultivate your mind, the brighter your future will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rivera. We are now going into student board reporters. Representing Bellflower High School is Trista Peterson. Welcome, Trista.
Good evening, everyone, members of the board, President Garza, honored guests. My name is Trista Peterson, and I am a senior at Bellflower High School, and I thank you all for allowing me to be here today. Next slide, please. I would like to start off with our past events at Bellflower. We start off with our Homecoming Week with our theme Into the Universe. We had our Spirit Dress-Up Days, our lunchtime events, our Glow-in-the-Dark Rally, which many of our students loved and enjoyed participating in. Following our rally, we had our middle school dance, and we had our Homecoming Football Game against Fireball. During our halftime show, our senior homecoming corps walked on the field, and our Twenty Twenty-Three Homecoming Queen, Madison Pacheco, was crowned. Last but not least, our Homecoming Dance this previous Saturday for our high school students, and we crowned King Paul Palacios. On the same day as our Homecoming Night, we celebrated Senior Night for our cheer team, football team, and our Buccaneer Brigade. In addition, we had our Bug Tailgate. We passed out drinks, pizza, chips, and a bug pride tee-shirt for everyone that purchased a ticket. During the month of September, we also highlighted suicide prevention. Our amazing counselors provided resources, support, and free merchandise. Many of our teachers and staff also dressed up for attendance awareness this past month with our theme Shine a Light on Attendance and show of support. Now, I would like to introduce the upcoming events. This week, we've been hosting our College Awareness Week alongside our college fair and lunch events, including trivia and carnival games. One of my favorite upcoming events, on October twenty-sixth, we have our Fall Fest. We opened this event up to not only Bellflower High School students and family, but as well as our community. This year, we have decided to offer an extension to our elementary schools and possibly join us for a trunk-or-treat experience. For Red Ribbon Week, we're encouraging students to stay drug-free by decorating our campuses, our classroom doors, hosting lunch events, and spirit days. And last but not least, for upcoming events, we are bringing in a motivational speaker, Keith Hawkins, to speak to our seventh, ninth grade, and twelfth grade students on S E L leadership and leaving a long-lasting, powerful impact on school culture. And now we have our brand-new student and teacher spirit teams in order to boost school spirit and school culture. There are different teams named after animals, and they are divided by last names. Both student and teacher groups can earn points for their teams by participating in school activities. Each staffletee team is paired with three student teams, and any point that a staffletee team earns will be added to their spirit points. So for example, the maroon team earns ninety points. The dolphins, lions, and bears will also earn ninety points, along with the points the students have earned themselves. And the winning teams will earn a prize for participating. And to conclude the presentation, we have Staying Updated with All Things Bellflower Middle and High School. And that's the end. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Representing Mayfair High School is Lennox Scott. Welcome, Lennox.
Thank you. Good evening, President Garza, school board, Superintendent Dr. Droudi, district colleagues, and all in attendance. Again, I just wanted to extend my thanks for you guys allowing me to be here today to represent Mayfair and tell you guys what happened this past month, or this past fall. To start off, I think we can all agree that mental health has been a big component of this generation. So to accommodate that, Mayfair has created Monsoon's Matter, which is an event that happened during Suicide Prevention Month, which I believe is September, where we had games at lunchtime and presentation to really share the message that it's okay to ask for help. We also posted Q R codes around the school where students could scan the Q R codes, and all they had to do was share the severity of any issue that they had going on, and that would decide what day or what time the counselors would meet with them. Overall, I feel like this does not only improve the soon's mental, but also improves the connection between staff and students, which also helped us complete L cap goals in number one and three. This next slide focuses on our pathway focus, which is construction. Now, as all of you may know, Woodshop is one of our electives that we offer here at Mayfair. And Woodshop is one of our electives that we offer here at Mayfair. And when you guys think of Woodshop, you may think of building tables or building birdhouses. But in my opinion, I believe that our Woodshop has really broken the boundaries and actually started to build a tiny home. Now, I spoke with Mr. Drown, which is the teacher and advisor of the elective, and he specifically told me the layout of this tiny home. Now, he said it is at two-hundred-and-twenty square feet. It will have a bathroom, toilet, shower, sink, two windows, and of course, a front door. Now, all he has to tell me is the rent. Now, in this slide, it also talks about student engagement, but of course, a different type. Now, I really just wanted to commend our staff and teachers for truly preparing our students to be college and career-ready. Now, if you look at the middle of our slide, that is a picture of our teachers, and that is an example of how they allowed these students to get college and career-ready, where they had conversations with teachers each Tuesday. And this is where different teachers with different backgrounds and different majors allowed the students to conversate with them or converse with them to. to, again, get them college-ready. And then, to the right, we have our counselors presenting our A-through-G requirements to, again, get our seniors ready for college. And just to share a little data, August tenth to September first, nineteen students visited our College and Career Center, our new College and Career Center in the STEAM building. But to date, a hundred-and-ninety-five students have visited our College and Career Center, which I think is a big accomplishment, which also helped us complete LCAP goal number two. Now, this slide focuses on our fall sports, and just to congratulate the CIF-bound fall sports, which is varsity volleyball and individuals from cross-country. And then, we also have another picture of our new flag football team, which I believe if they're not undefeated, they've only lost one game, so I believe that's a big accomplishment for a new team, essentially. And then, also to point out, our Mr. Bedell, our coach for the volleyball, um, excuse me, for the football team, won L.A. Chargers Coach of the Week, which of, of course, is a big accomplishment. Now, looking back, with the milk bucket game, Mayfair did win, which made it Mayfair Ten, Lakewood Seven. And then, quarter ended, so parents, make sure to check the portals and check your students' grades. And again, attendance rate is, just to point out another accomplishment, our attendance rate is at a three-year high, which I believe, you know, is a big thing. Now, looking ahead, we have our fall sports slash homecoming assembly, October twentieth. We also have homecoming coming up, October twenty-first. Red Ribbon Week, October twenty-third through the twenty-seventh. CIF playoffs, and also another big accomplishment where our band instructor, Mr. Phillips, has created a joint band with different schools, which I believe include Lakewood, Bellflower, and many more. And joining these bands together allowed them to qualify for the Rose Parade of 2025, which I believe is a big thing, so make sure to be there. And then, we also started Hispanic Heritage Month at Mayfair, which we've been announcing every day to really, again, spread the culture throughout the school. Finally, to conclude, I just wanted to thank everybody again for allowing me to come here and represent Mayfair and telling you how Mayfair has flourished this past fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Scott. Representing Somerset High School is Sierra Richway. Welcome, Sierra.
Thank you, and good evening, President Garza, members of the board, members of the cabinet, and to all the guests in the audience. My name is Sierra Richway, and I am a junior at Somerset. Here are the latest and future events. We just concluded our fall break, which was two weeks long. And now, students and staff have returned to the classroom where they could resume the work of teaching and learning. Speak, speaking of learning, Block Three began this week, and just so you know, Block Three stands for Better Learning of Curriculum. We have a unique school calendar and learning system, which is one of the reasons Somerset continues to hold a distinction as a California model continuation school. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. According to the American Cancer Society, breast cancer is the most common cancer that women may face in their lifetime. It can occur at any age, but the risk goes up as you get older. Somerset will show their support to patients and survivors of breast cancer by wearing pink and by displaying pink ribbons, signs, balloons, posters throughout campus. We stand with those and their resolve and fight to defeat breast cancer. Next month, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, is Somerset's Turkey Day. This is a major event for Somerset and has been a tradition for over forty years. All those in attendance will be treated to a delicious full-course turkey dinner and a dessert, all being served by the wonderful students at Somerset. Turkey Day is also an annual fundraiser for Somerset, and all proceeds go to student scholarships. And this concludes our board report for the evening. Thank you for lis, for listening, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Richway. We will now go to superintendent's report. Dr. Droudi, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I do, Ashley. Let me get organized here. First, uh.
I'm so sorry, Dr. Droudi. So, our student board reporters, if you have to go now, you're excused to go home, finish up some homework, get ready for tomorrow. Thank you so much for attending. Go ahead, Dr. Droudi. Sorry about that.
First, I want to thank the, the new student board members that were, that were just sworn in. They've, I've worked with them the last three weeks, and they're, I'm so proud of their diligence and trying to pay attention to the board protocols and all that, so. So, they will, they will start getting rotated in next week. Today, what I told them was, you know, just to kind of calm their nerves, they can watch how the whole thing flows and feel comfortable, and then they'll start to process next year we rotate them in. But they're doing a good job. I'm gonna continue to meet with them for the next month or two, just to make sure they understand how everything works. There's a lot of information to share, so I want, I want to be mindful that they also have other studies they have to do in their schoolwork as well. So, thank you, thank you for the student board members and the parents for coming in to support the students with that. The district has recently completed the quarterly uniform complaint report summary for July through September, as required by the county, as a result of the Williams Settlement Legislation. There were no complaints received during this quarter in the areas of instructional materials, facilities, or teacher assignments. The management team and classified leaders such as elite custodians underwent training and practiced our response in the case we experienced an active shooter on campus this past Monday. I won't describe full details of what we learned, but it was humbling, informative, and nerve-wracking at the times that we have to actually review and practice for, for such events. Each school site will undergo its own training with their staffs and also with authorities. And I want to thank Dr. Avila for arranging the training and the management team for their diligence and attention to such an important matter. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Droudi. We'll now go into Board Communications. Board Member Armstrong.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out this evening for this board meeting. Well, this month, I did attend the Teacher of the Year banquet, and we celebrated Ms. Melissa Ellis. And not only is she a Teacher of the Year, she was actually distinguished. So, we're hoping that she would go further and, and get even more awards. I also attended the STEAM reception. I did leave early, though, and I'm okay. I, I attended the California Latino School Board Association meeting. The only thing with that is that the, the conference was canceled. However, we, some, some of the activities still played out because we had an, we had a, I should say, we, we had a speaker, we had an event at the Queen Mary in which Dolores Wertha was there, and she addressed us. But they, the, the, the board of the Latino Association decided to postpone the rest of the conference because the hotel workers were striking. And if you know anything about Dolores Wertha and her work with civil rights, she's not gonna encourage us to, you know, encourage workers to cross that picket line. So, however, it was really nice to see her and her family and her just carrying on that, that legacy. And for those who don't know, she is the cousin of Caesar Chavez, so a lot of people don't know that. And then, I did attend the State of the City. It was interesting, and it was just really exciting to see what's going on in our beautiful city of Bellflower. We are growing so much. And despite the, the things that happens, you know, around the schools with the, with incidents, we are really trying to keep our city up and running and making it even better. I attended the homecoming game, and again, it was a lot of fun. My daughter's a cheerleader, so I always go to the games because I have to see her. So, that was a lot of fun, and then, and even it carried over to the next day because everyone was excited about the homecoming dance, you know. So, those times are always exciting, and, and I'm just gonna, you know, cherish those moments. I have one more year to enjoy those moments with my child. And then, I also want to, you know, bring awareness to, of course, breast cancer, breast cancer awareness. They had an event this past weekend in, in Compton, and it was the Walk, Walk for Cure. Walk for a Cure, that's what they titled it. I, I kind of missed it, though, because they don't do the walk like we do it in Bellflower when we have the Relay for Life, where it goes a whole day, all night, and it ends the next morning. Well, I, I thought that's how they had their setup, but then I kind of thought about it, they're not set up like Bellflower. So, I kind of, you know, I kind of missed the festivities because they started and ended like in, in four hours, like from seven to eleven. And, and I couldn't attend that. I couldn't attend it because our cheerleaders had an event at UCLA. So, that was, you know, so I, I, I had to pick and choose. But still, just to bring awareness to breast cancer awareness, you know, if, you know, if you feel in your heart that you can contribute to one of these organizations, and just encourage each other, your friends, your families, you know, to go and have themselves checked out, because it is curable. Also, I just want to, I have something. Also, I ran across this article, you know, if you've been attending the meetings and been following us, we've been talking a lot about Americans with Disabilities Act and and trying to, you know, like have more accommodations and just be aware. So, I just want to read this. I found this article, and it's titled "We Need a Champion." And so, what I really want to challenge all of us to do is to learn about disability language and disability adequate etiquette. You know, don't use labels, you know, ask individuals how they choose to identify, and avoid using ableist metaphors such as crazy and lame. And so, you know, but one way we can do that is we need to learn how to recognize our own biases. So, learn how your unconscious bias can impact your behavior toward people with disabilities. So, there is, if you want more information, I could give you a website so you can look up, look up some information for yourself. Another thing that we can do is we can, we can interact more with people with disabilities, and we can build relationships with peoples with disabilities. And the research informs us that those who have authentic, authentic relationship with people with disabilities act in a less prejudiced way and have greater disability acceptance. Don't avoid social interactions with people with disabilities. It is a form of ableism. And another thing we can do is we can recognize and respond to ableism. Never assume with a visible or non-visible disability that they can't do something. Doing so is a form of ableism, which, which refers to societal, societal attitudes. It's the structures that we have in place and policies that devalue people with disabilities. We need to honor intersectional identities and use appropriate language and adhere to disability etiquette, and help those who do not. So, we, we're all in this together. Let's help each other. And we need to be aware of accessibility barriers. We need to consider accessibility barriers that are physical, attitudinal, and implicit in educational policies and practices. And we need to strive to make inclusive environments for everyone. Lack of accessibility results in less inclusion. And we need to engage in critical dialogue. Ensure people with disabilities are present in conversations and decision-making. People with disabilities are the experts in their, in their own lived experiences. So, and we also need to include anti-ableist practices and disability content in our curriculum. We really need to even teach our children. Mayfair has an assembly every year that brings the kids out together, and it's just a big old party. I, I have, I didn't go to it this year. I mean, I don't think we had time to have it this year. But I, I don't know if it has, but Mayfair has a, a thing that they have. They bring all the kids out, and it's a wonderful time. I know they used to. I've been to it before. And we need to advocate for policies that go beyond compliance. We need to ensure that most, that the most impacted are leading these efforts. Nothing about us without us. We need to push for policies that uplift and support broader issues of disability rights and put those who are impacted by multiple marginalized identities at the forefront of these efforts. And I do appreciate you listening, and we're all in this together, you all, okay? Let's, we need to be a champion, and we can hold each other out. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Armstrong. Board Member Elhessen.
Thank you, and thank you for enlightening us, Board Member Armstrong. This is Disability Awareness Month also for employment, and I'm sure you'll be seeing a lot of that in the news and other social media. But I wanted to start off my board report, and all of you know, I'm one of Janice Han's appointees, and she's actually doing something for us, which I thought was really great. She has proposed a summer tutoring program at the LA County Libraries that will run eight weeks with a focus on reading, math, reading, math, reading, I'm sorry, and for students through the grades of first through eighth grade. Thirty-six libraries are going to be identified, and one of them is our library here in the city of Bellflower. They're in high-needs communities to serve the LA County. And according to her statistics, the California Report Card Reading stated that fifty-eight percent of Californian third graders are below their grade level in reading, and among the low-income students of color, that number rises up to seventy-five percent. So, I'm hoping staff will post that for our, for, as we move forward, getting closer to the summer. I also wanted to mention that I met with the Vice President of Student Services at Sarita's College, Robin Brammer. And the reason we talked was basically looking at re-establishing something that I had started back in two thousand seventeen when I was on the board. It's called a Bridge Program, providing equal opportunities for our, our students to earn college credit, our disabled students to earn college credit as their able peers. The purpose is to equally have them transition into the community college, and she was very positive and welcoming of that idea. And we're going to start moving forward. She's moving forward and talking to staff to see how that, we can make that happen. I was also very happy to hear that the mental model that I introduced to the district has been adopted, and thank you, Dr. Avila, for including it and including the components, as well as the beautiful artwork you did around that. And I'm impressed with Dr. Droudi's presentation and his podcast and discussing that. So, I'm glad to see it's being used, and I look forward to positive outcomes from that. Also, I wanted everyone to know that Board Member Armstrong and myself are going to be presenting next week at the California School Board Association for Black Educators. And the topic was, is on Empowering Students of Color Through the ADA in regards to creating greater advocacy. So, we've been working on our presentation, and I, I'm excited in presenting that. We're, we're going to be presenting that together. Also, I wanted to announce that CalAps will be, was nominated to receive the Golden Bell Award at the CSBA Conference in San Francisco. Excuse me. Currently, we have nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight students enrolled, over sixteen courses being offered. This is an outstanding growth over the last seven years, and it has to do with our leadership of Lisa Vezito, who's our CEO. I also attended the, I'm losing my voice, sorry. I also attended the STEAM building reception, which I thought was really great and allowed opportunity of members in their community, as well as other board members across different districts to see the work that we're doing, and I was really impressed, the most impressed with our on-immage table, which actually has three cadavers. Animation, not real cadavers, that are displayed, and it gives students actually real experience in looking at the bone structure, muscle, tendons, as well as the brain. in looking at the bone structure, muscle tendons, as well as the brain. It was really quite astonishing. I was very impressed. As well with our rooftop garden, where we got to eat some carrots, which were really delicious and sweet. It was just a great experience, and I'm very proud of our STEAM building and our Principal Jean Diaz, and being able to move things forward and our students taking their learning one step forward also. And I think that concludes my board report. I wanted to leave a final message, motivational message, is that the strongest people are those who win battles we know nothing about. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Elhessen. Board Member Stewart?
Good evening. Sorry, I've come down with a bit of a cold. First, I wanted to mention an event that I missed last board report, and I don't know how I missed this event. But I attended a few weeks ago the Bellflower versus Mayfair Girls' Flag Football Game, and it was so amazing, and I can't believe I forgot to talk about it. So I'm so sorry to both of those teams. Watching the girls play was so much fun. Coach Reenster at Mayfair, she was actually my basketball coach when I went to Bellflower. I'm aging her, so she might be mad at that, but I just, they were so much fun. Dr. Dharadi and I, we went from Mayfair's side to Bellflower's side and watched it, and it was just amazing. So I'm so sorry that I forgot that event, and I'm so glad that they're doing so amazing. On September twenty-fifth, sorry, I attended the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor Meeting. I am one of the delegates for the Fed, and so it was really nice to support them, to hear their concerns about our state and to hear their endorsements and just be supportive and be involved in that. So that was really nice. On September twenty-eighth, I attended the STEAM Night Reception as well with my colleagues. On October second, I started my CSBA Masters in Governance Course One, which is Foundations of Effective Governance, and I'm really enjoying those because I'm learning so much about what to do, what not to do, taking it and applying to what's happening here with our own board and other boards that I see. So I'm really excited. I'm going to be doing this for the next two months, every Monday night. But I'm really excited to learn and to learn more from my peers from across the state. On October sixth, I attended the Bellflower versus Fireball Football Game Homecoming. Congrats on another big win, forty-five, nothing. That was pretty awesome. On Saturday, I went to TEDx South Central. It was in the Crenshaw District. It was a talk. I was invited by one of my friends. She's a Bellflower High School alumni, Dr. Cynthia Cologne. And it was just, her speech was so amazing. She asked me what I thought, and I sent her a long voice message just telling her. But she basically talked about college applications and how to differentiate yourself on college applications when you want to get into, you know, so many schools, and it's so competitive, and just the key details of what you can do as far as just building up your resume. So making sure that you're in a lot of clubs and activities and sports and being president of ASB or, you know, the kids that sit and talk to us and they present their student board representative reports, all of those things. So it was really an awesome speech to hear her talk about that. And then I just love the fact that she's an alumni from Bellflower, so I was so excited that she invited me, and so that was really nice. And then, just on a personal note, this is kind of a weird one, but on Saturday I attended the Happo Awards. They're the Hollywood African Prestigious Awards, and my friend Katie Albert, she actually went to Bellflower as well, and we played softball together here, but she won the award for Best Supporting Actress in an Independent Film. So I just wanted to say congratulations to her. I think the reason I try to highlight people that are alumni or people in our community is because we want to build a culture here in Bellflower that is community and family-based. And I think part of that is recognizing the people from the past and honoring the people that are working for us now and our students and everyone being involved. I feel like this should be a family atmosphere. And so I really like to highlight people like that in my board reports when I come across them. And I also want to just give a plug about joining PTA. Please make sure you guys join PTA. They're still taking memberships, and they're so important. And just a message that I would like to give is be kind to people, show respect, listen. And just, there's so many things that you can do to be a better person, and so I would just like to give that advice. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Stewart. Board Member Kritchfield?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, it's been a crazy couple of weeks, but it's been a really productive couple of weeks and a lot of really exciting things happening with the district, including a few of the events. Most of the events were already spoken about, but there was the Bellflowers Mayor Prayer Breakfast and also the State of the City. And I totally agree with my colleague Armstrong, a lot of great things happening in the city. Some really cool things I didn't even know about, like the American Ninja Corps. Like there's some really cool stuff happening, and Mayor Santinaz, he speaks so well. I felt like it went really fast because he did such a good job, like, leading the event. But that was really nice to see. Also, our CalAps board meeting with my colleague Dr. Elhessen. We had the privilege of seeing all the videos that are going to be released, talking about each of the individual programs. They're very well-produced. I'd like to say thank you to our CEO, Lisa Acevedo, for putting those together. I know we, as a district, are also putting some of those videos together. So I really appreciate the fact that we're starting to highlight some of the courses that make our district special, and we can share those and really guide students into the career path that they most are going to be successful at. So those videos are going to be coming out soon, so that was really exciting. I also got the opportunity to sit through my own daughter's IEP, and this is the first time I've sat through that two-hour IEP, both as a parent first and foremost, but also as a board member. So it was, it was an interesting experience. And one of the things outside of the parent hat was just really recognizing how many people and how much effort goes into each IEP and how much time it takes and how much collaboration is really necessary to make sure that we're giving our students the supports that they need. So I have an amazing IEP team. They did a great job. I think we have a second one coming up because we didn't get through all of it. A lot of people at that table. But it was very illuminating how much work and effort goes into that. And it did bring up a lot of interest in the upcoming audit for special ed and seeing what we can do to even make our processes better and really fill in the gaps and address some of the concerns that a lot of staff and parents have had. So I know that that work is being done, that audit is happening, and we're going to be looking at that in the next upcoming board meeting. So that was a long meeting, but very informative in multiple ways. So, let me see. Yeah, that's basically it. It has been a rough couple of weeks. But, and people told me, like, just because I have so much going on in the personal side of things, why do I go to so many events and why do I try to do so much, like, with this hat on? And truth be told, it's because I really do enjoy it and I love it, and it's great to hear all the great things that my colleagues are talking about and seeing our students and seeing what's happening on our sites. It doesn't feel like work or a half to. It really is a get-to. So I just appreciate everybody makes all that happen, and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Kritchfield. So as for myself, I also attended some of those events, the STEAM Building, wonderful turnout. Thank you so much, staff, for all your work. We really, you could tell. So appreciate all of that. Liquid Celebrates, attended with Dr. Dharadi, and we were able to see how they're doing. Amazing things in that city as well. Bellflower High School Homecoming Game, and I will, this Friday, tomorrow, will be attending the Paramount Game as well with some of my board colleagues. Looking forward to that. I also am happy that Board Member Armstrong spoke out about disabilities so that way I can highlight the fact that all of us on this board have a personal connection to someone with a disability. And so by Board Member Elhessen's definition of a lot of times there are battles going on in the background that no one else really realizes you're fighting, that makes all of us extremely brave on this board. So I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out and that we continue, all of us on this board, to work together so that way we can make all of these things happen for our students. Thank you so much.
It's time for discussion items. Dr. Dharadi?
Yes, we have two discussion items this evening. At this time, I'll turn this over to Dr. Avila to discuss substance use prevention.
Okay. Good evening, Board. This evening, district staff will be providing an update of some of the supports in place to support substance use prevention. Given Red Ribbon Week is also acknowledged during this month, we wanted to provide an update of this topic. I am joined this evening by Ms. Stacy Williams, Program Administrative Guidance, Brittany Gaspar, Assistant Principal of Bellflower Middle High School, Janisha Walker, Counselor at Mayfair Middle High School, and Maribel Hernandez, Counselor at Mayfair Middle and High School. The purpose of this slide is to provide awareness of the supports and services the district has in place to promote awareness of substance use prevention at our secondary schools. Our presenters will elaborate further of each of these particular areas to provide the board and the community with awareness. I also would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank the work of PTA, who also supports students and parents in the BUSD community. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Stacy Williams to discuss a little bit about community partners and outreach.
Thank you. Good evening, President Garza, Board Members, Dr. Dharadi, Cabinet Members. Thanks for having me here this evening. We are truly blessed in Bellflower to have as many community partners as we do that support our students. And some of those partners that we work with are LA-CADA, which is the Los Angeles Center for Alcohol and Drug Abuse. So that is counseling for drug use. We have Community Family Guidance, which is also counseling but also therapy. We partner with LACO, the Toupe Division, which is Tobacco Use and Prevention Education, as well as the Community School Initiative, which was brought to Bellflower this year and last year, and we will be moving into Mayfair this year. Community Schools Initiative is a partnership with LACO to provide sites with staff to be able to address the needs of the students by bringing the services to the site so we can remove that barrier for them. We also partner with InterQuest Detection Canines, the LA County Sheriff, Carrying Connections, we've partnered with for many, many years, Think Together, and YMCA provide before and after-school care as well as enrichment. And then we have the opportunity to provide parent workshops as well. And our most recent parent workshop was Mental Health and Suicide Prevention. And the core features that we talked about during that workshop were facts and myths about suicide, what are protective factors, what are some of the warning signs and risk factors, who is the highest at-risk and why, suggestions for responding to suicide risk, and then appropriate ways to interact with at-risk youth. Finally, we provided a lot of resources to the families that attended, and the counselors included exactly how to get support on their particular campus. Any questions?
If we can, Board, if we can take questions at the end.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Gaspar, and I'm Assistant Principal at Bellflower Middle High School. I'm excited to give an update on InterQuest Detection Canines. InterQuest Detection Canines is a drug prevention program. The canines are trained to detect substances such as drugs, alcohol, gunpowder, medications, substances that pose a concern to a student population. The goal is to create a positive presence to help everyone feel safe on campus. In doing this, we do have random inspections. And we first introduced the program by having assemblies in the beginning of the school year. We did have a member from the program and the canine come out and speak to the students. We also sent home letters to the community so everybody was aware of what was happening. To give some data, the first three visits of Bellflower highlighted. So we had three alerts on the first visit, five alerts on the second visit, and then five alerts on the third visit. We have had two other visits since then that aren't on the presentation. In those last two visits, we've only had three alerts. So we can see that as the time goes on, there are less alerts. Las Flores, on August twenty-second, only had one alert. Mayfair Middle High School, September fifteenth, had five alerts. I do know Mayfair has also had two visits since the data. This is our first year of implementation with the program. We have received positive feedback from students as well as the data. So we have heard from students that they feel safer on campus, they can use the bathroom without it being smoked in. And also, we have heard students say that students are not bringing substance to school as much anymore. I am excited. I do feel the difference just working on the campus, and I look forward to continue on this year and hopefully in the future. I do want to say thank you to the board for helping us create this partnership with InterQuest as it has proven to be successful so far. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Maribel Hernandez from Mayfair Middle School.
Janisha Walker from Mayfair Middle School.
And together, we're going to present on the student engagement piece. Counseling team and admin have coordinated guest speakers to come visit our campus and share different experiences, like the most recent one was Project Eli. Parent Perla came and shared her experience of losing her son through fentanyl use, and that was very powerful for our students. We also have done assemblies and the counseling presentations to include LA-CADA support. And the CHP has also come and done a presentation where they show firsthand what a car looks like when it has been in an accident and different consequences for driving under the influence.
We have also had activities on campus to promote substance use prevention and education. We have posters and other resources such as pamphlets available for students. We also, as counselors, speak to students and review their grades, attendance, behavior, and other needs. And we also have the Wellness Center available for middle and high school students.
Last school year, and in this particular area, I was, we were really able to engage our students, our staff, our parents, our counselors, our administration, to really listen about our program that we had in place referred to as GLAD. As part of listening to the feedback that we were receiving, it was really determined that we needed to update our program and take a different approach. And as a result of that, we tasked a group of individuals that came together, which included our counselors, our deans, our high school principals, to really look at our GLAD program and see what updates we can make into that to better enhance it and to really address the needs of our students. As I mentioned, we also were able to, or no, I didn't mention, but we also were able to partner with LACO to help us look at some of the trends in LA County and also to help us identify an evidence-based approach and materials that we can use to engage students in this particular area. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Stacy Williams to go a little bit further in regards to the program, which is referred to as RISE.
Thank you. Hello again. As you can see, our, as we were going through the changes and looking at how to update it, we found that there was a need to update the name as well. So GLAD became RISE, and RISE stands for Restorative Interventions Equals Success in Education. And one of the things that we added were interventions prior to attending RISE. So it wasn't one and then done, essentially. So we have multiple interventions. One of those is Navigate 360. That's a computer program where lessons can be assigned to students based on what their area of need is. And RISE itself is an intensive intervention for students. It is two full days, but it does address their particular needs. As I said, RISE is replacing GLAD, and we use a Cannabis Prevention and Awareness Curriculum that we partnered with LACO to make sure we went through it and found that it met our needs and that we could use it. And so now our GLAD program is RISE. Questions?
I just, we just want to thank again the board for their support in this particular area as we continue to work to provide a safe and supportive environment to our students. And at this time, if the board has any questions regarding the information that was presented?
Board Member Armstrong?
I just wanted to say, my daughter told me about when the dogs visited. You know, we're dog people, and, you know, so it's like, okay, don't lose focus. The dogs are there and they're working. It's not, they're not for you to play with. So, but I'm glad to see that we've already seen a reduction in, you know, a reduction in catching these students with a, a reduction in catching these students with, with these substances. And I tell you, if they, if they know they're gonna be, they're gonna be, uh, uh, part of statistics in about 20, 30 years, they would stop doing these substances, so. So the education about the drugs and what the effects is really, really important. So I am glad that we have the, you know, the, the, the drug-free week coming up. So, you know, just make sure that we, we educate our kids on what it really does to the body in the long haul. So, okay, but that's it, no other questions, thank you.
Thank you Board Member Armstrong. Board Member Ahesson.
Yes, um, I have two questions. One on the, um, canines. When you say, um, alerts, they detected something, and it was a confiscated? And what were, what were some, was it drugs related mostly?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, did you want, just my, yeah? I can speak on behalf of Bellflower. Um, when I say alerts, it means the dog detected an odor, um, of one of the substances. At that point, we do search. In this case, there are times where we have taken items into our possession, and there's times where it's just transfer odors, meaning the student's backpack might have been around a substance, and so that smell is still there, or the student was around the substance, someone that was doing it in the home, outside of the school. We do further have conversations with the students and call home to make parents aware that the students might have been searched, and this is why. There have been cases where we have taken things into our possession, and it was vapes, um, on all accounts at Bellflower.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification. Um, and the second question I have is on the RISE program. So you say that Navigate 360 is based on needs. Can you give me an example of what those needs are and how the curriculum is structured?
So for example, students are assigned specific lessons so that they address whatever is, is going on with the student. So for example, if I have a student who's vaping with THC, I'm not gonna assign them a lesson on tobacco. It'll be a lesson that's addressed to what's going on in order to meet their needs and educate them on the effects of.
So are you, I'm, when I ask about the curriculum, I'm really looking at, so are you delving into the health perspective, the psych perspective, a combination of it? What's the curriculum structured like?
It's the harmful effects of.
Okay. So it doesn't include any psych components?
I don't know that for sure.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
But just to also add on that, so I know as part of whenever we do identify a student who needs this support, as it was mentioned by our school counselors, um, we're, um, how we approach it is we'll assign a student the, the content. But as you heard from our school counselors, as part of the, um, the follow-up support, our school counselors are meeting with the students to determine what are their needs, what's causing the behavior, if at that point, uh, connecting them with the LA-CADA, Community Family Guidance, or themselves also providing check-in support. I don't know if there's anything else, Counselors, that I can add to that?
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes, uh, we do a referral to our Carrying Connections, our Case Manager at our site. Then they do an intake with the family, and depending on what they were, um, caught with, they do either a CFGC, um, Asian Pacific, or directly to LA-CADA. And I believe at, at, uh, Bellflower, they currently have a LA-CADA rep on their site, and we're working towards having that at Mayfair as well.
Oh, great.
So it is, it's individualized, and then they are assigned to be followed up by their, um, immediate counselor.
Right, 'cause having done the counseling myself and worked with students, it's a multi-tiered process, so it's not going to be one area, and like you said, the needs are on a wide spectrum.
Yes.
In regards to identifying, so that's why I was curious, how are you?
Yes, they stay on our radar. And we, and we continue to check in, and, uh, we, we support, uh, based on making sure that they're connecting even with their teachers or, uh, security guard, just connecting them with different people that can help them navigate their day and, and be successful, and not think about doing that as a way to cope.
So are you, um, as part of this program, or you might want to think about incorporating a mentorship?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Good info, yes.
Yeah, good, okay. And the other thing I was gonna mention, um, God, it slipped my mind, okay. When you're going through this, uh, are you collecting data so we can get student demographics, whether it's foster youth, youth of color, the age groups? Just for, um, I don't know if other Board Members are interested in knowing, but I think it's important for us to know so that we can help identify, uh, specific interventions to help deal with the population, um, issues that, that come up.
Uh, yes, so our-
As a preventative, as a preventive approach.
Yes, our area system already, um, notates, um, race and, and, um, if they're on a homeless affidavit, so when they get, um, an additional record, when they're caught with something as well, um, and that log under discipline and counseling, when we run those queries, we do have that data gathered.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you Board Member Ahesson, Board Member Stewart.
Um, I just wanted to say, I'm really excited to hear that there are positive comments from the students, especially in regards to the bathrooms and things like that, because we want our children to feel safe at school, so that really made me happy. And I know Brad and I, we got a demo at, um, Mayfair's Back-to-School Night with the dogs, and so we got to see how that worked and how they alerted, and that was pretty awesome to see. The only question I had, one of the questions I had was, you know, is there, you know, vaping awareness or other drugs? Because, you know, those things need to be addressed as well, which you already answered. And have we already started this program? Are students already using this program right now?
What, uh, are you referring to the, the RISE or the?
Yes, the RISE.
Actually, uh, we, um, have it available, but, uh, the prior interventions are working, and so we haven't had a student, uh, eligible yet for RISE. So we are, we're eager, well, it's one of those double-edged swords, uh, we're ready. We're hoping we don't get students there, uh, but ultimately, our counselors are ready, because our school counselors are the ones who facilitate the, the RISE programs. So, um, I know they have a scheduled, ready to go, um, and the, the content's ready to go, everything's ready to go.
Awesome, that's what I wanted to hear, thank you so much.
Thank you Board Member Stewart, Board Member Critchfield.
Uh, first of all, thank each of you for the work that you're doing. I've, I mean, even though it's, it's relatively new, it being in intervention and the restorative part, I mean, I've noticed, uh, just myself with the amount, the amount of Student Matters, it, you're, you're, you're definitely doing something that's working, and I really appreciate it. We even had a little extra time before the, the meeting tonight, because we didn't have, uh, so many Student Matters. So I mean, it, it really is working and it's making a difference, uh, so thank you very much for the work that you're doing. I, I did have one question, I think you kind of already answered it though. The, uh, it, it's mainly cannabis, correct? Is it, so we can't, but you all said there's some that are not THC, so it's vaping in general and cannabis?
Um, as of right now, we've only been doing it for two months at, um, Bellflower. It has only been cannabis, but the canines are trained to detect other substances and gunpowders, but as far as right now, it's only been cannabis.
Okay, and with, with the canines, uh, as far as how many, um, instances there have been of them detecting, do we know about how many that's been? And I know sometimes it's not them detecting it on a student, right? It's, sometimes they'll ditch it in like a trash can or something, right? So, and that's great too, 'cause it's not just trying to, you know, get the student, it's just making sure that they don't feel like bringing it on the campus, right?
So we can provide a, a data report of each visit and what was detected, um, as part of the Board Weekly, to give more specifics.
Or do they, they get that data each time they go on campus?
Yes.
Oh, that's great.
So they track and, um, as far as what's confiscated and what particular item, whether it's the alert was due to residue or residual, um, or, or if they actually confiscated something that was not allowed to be on school grounds. Um, and then they can distinguish what is the item.
Awesome.
And just to add something to your comments, um, there have been times where we search bathrooms also, and we have found vapes in the bathroom that students have either left there to ditch or come back to. Um, and so we have been able to remove those off-campus as well.
Awesome, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
That, that is usually what happens, so you go to the trash cans or other places after, uh, the, the dogs leave, and you'll find all kinds of stuff.
And, and, and again, uh, Board i- in community, um, our objective is to be preventative, prevention, and, and, and we're, we're prepared to provide early intervention, uh, intervention if we do find students, but our goal is to increase awareness that we have supports, we have resources, our staff are doing a diligent job to try to outreach. Uh, we have provided parent workshops, we're gonna continue to provide parent workshops to engage our parents around this topic. But ultimately, um, as we mentioned, and it's a holistic approach we try to take, and not just, um, consequence, but rather, there are consequences available, however, we also try to do preventative work.
Thank you Board Member Critchfield, thank you staff. Thank you so much for doing this work, I know that it's, um, you know, kind of a tireless, you know, job to do all of this on top of what you have to do on a daily basis. So we all appreciate all your work that you're doing for, um, doing with our kids. Uh, so also, I did have a question with regard to, uh, parents. What type of, like, workshops do they attend?
Um, we've had, um, was it two last year, Ms. Williams, or one last year? I know we did, I think I rec, uh, we invited representatives from the DEA and LA-CADA and, uh, Community Family Guidance to do a joint presentation last year around fentanyl, because that's when we wanted to hi- highlight the work that we were doing in the District regarding, um, the training we've added to our, um, health assistance, our administration regarding the, the use of Narcan that's available on our campuses now. And so we wanted to provide more awareness to our community regarding that, but also awareness about fentanyl and the harmful effects, that was last year. This year, we, um, um, have one scheduled. And then we have, uh, we have another one scheduled, and then we also have one on safety, and then we did suicide prevention. So we're trying to engage parents in various topics, but we have done it around, uh, substance prevention too.
Alright, great.
And anything we can do to just kind of make sure that parents come to those things will be, will be wonderful. We're doing our best, but, uh, uh, I'm saying this for anybody listening out there, there'll be, uh, on the BUSD news, there'll be information about when these trainings are. Uh, this is, this is a collaborative thing, this, uh, uh, the staff's gonna do their best, but we also need the parents aware as well. And if we tag team this thing, that's how we're gonna win it.
Dr. Avila, do, thank you, Dr. Droudi. Um, Dr. Avila, do we know, um, the percentage of parents who attend these, um, workshops? Are they mostly Spanish-speaking or English-speaking, a different?
Our num- our, our attendance is, uh, I would say, pretty low. I think the highest one we've had was about 20, uh, for our suicide prevention. Of the 20, I believe, uh, three were, uh, Spanish-speaking, and we are fortunate to have, uh, Sarah, uh, our District Translator, attending all these meetings, and who is able to translate for our families, um, to be able to, uh, listen in and participate in the, uh, in the presentations.
Great. Food for thought, Dr. Droudi, maybe a podcast on this? Thank you. And we'll get a, get you a translator too. I did have another question with regard to the, um, information that, um, my fellow Board Member Ahesson was requesting. I'm not sure, are we able to get that information for the Board about, um, like, how many demographics?
We can provide an update to, um, in regards to, um, a sort of discipline that we've had this year, regarding, specifically regarding substances, and to see how we can break it down by demographics also.
That would be wonderful, thank you. Anyone else like to make another?
I had a question, I was just wondering, with those meetings, the parent meetings, are they recorded so that parents can go back and watch them at a later date?
That's something, Ms. Stewart, we are in, researching a little further. But right now, they have all been live, and so we have to do some more research on our capacity to be able to do that.
Okay, 'cause I mean, obviously, we need to get more particip- participation, but if they could actually go back and watch those, maybe we would see that, you know, they will go back and watch those later, and at least the information is going out, you know, that's the goal of it.
And perhaps using our students to do that would be a great opportunity for them to start getting some hands-on training on that.
I think caution has to be raised in regards to confidentiality, some of those workshops on society, suicide prevention, um, parents are there to sometimes get advice if they're having a troubled child, and I don't think they would want that videotaped.
I'm talking about the presenters, the presenters and the information, not the people that are doing it, the presenting and the information going out, because we're saying we don't have a lot of participation, so I feel like we need to collaborate and come up with some ideas, so that was just an idea.
I think we can explore, um, ways in which we can record the, uh, presentations and try to, um, uh, keep the audience, um, attendees maybe not on screen, but I don't know, this is just something we have to further investigate, how the best can be accomplished.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Um, staff, any other last comments?
No, just thank you again, uh, Board and, uh, community for your support with this particular item.
Thank you.
Oh, and sorry, thank you to our presenters.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, let's go on to public hearings. It's time for the public hearing.
There's actually one more discussion, uh, item.
Oh, so sorry. The next item is expenditure limit?
Yes. So, um, our, our last discussion item is the Superintendent Authorization, Authorized Expenditure Limits. Uh, let me first provide some context for this, uh, uh, I think the Board Members know it, the public may not know, but, uh, as the Board continues to engage in the process of, of policy review, desire has been expressed to review the Superintendent Authorization Expenditure Limits. The District currently handles many contracts on a month's base, uh, on a monthly basis, and many of these contracts require immediate action to ensure there are no surface interruptions to the students and employees of the District. However, contracts of larger monetary sum require deliberation and careful consideration from the elected officials of the District. So, uh, it is recommended that the Board review, discusses Superintendent Authorization Expenditure, uh, limit. So you, you have the document there, and then this is just more or less a discussion, and ca- coming to conclusion with, uh, some limit.
So are we writing a Board, is this gonna be a Board Policy? For future, um, Board Members, so they have criteria?
Yes, you know what, there might have been an oversight in this thing, so my, my apologies, yes, there should have been a Board Policy attached to this thing, so my deepest apologies for this. So I'll have to push this to the next, uh, push this to the next meeting, so my apologies.
No problem, um, we'll look, we're looking forward to seeing it in the next meeting.
So... Were you requesting, just out of curiosity right now, were you requesting the Board to look at limits right now as far as amounts?
Yes, so-
So that's what you were looking for?
Yeah, right now, the, the, right now, there is no limit, and I think, uh, uh, the Board Members were interested in establishing a limit.
Right.
So the Board Policy changed, but like I said, uh, we, we scripted it, and it was just gonna be where you're gonna put how much it is. So my, like I said, my deepest apologies for not including, it's my, it's my oversight.
Thank you, Dr. Droudi. We will now move on to, uh, public hearings. It's time for the public hearing on Sunshine Initial Proposal Classified School Employee Use Association, Bellflower, Chapter 32. At this time, I will start by declaring the public hearing open. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this item? Is there any discussion from the Board? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So, so moved? So moved?
It's open and now we're closing.
Yes.
My second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Ahesson?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Critchfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. New business, do any members of the Board wish to add new business item on a future agenda?
Um, I, I wanted to look at, we've been talking about it for a while, an org chart. So I'd like to request if, uh, staff can put together an org chart, or we should, so that we can review and identify, there's been so many changes of administration, staff, and it's helpful, um, as Board Members to know who's who and where, and what their functions are operationally, so not just their title, but actually functional duties and operations that they fall under. Thank you.
Dr. Droudi, do we currently have an updated org chart?
We do have one under Superintendent's, uh, Superintendent's, uh, site. We'll have to make it more prevalent, just find another place, but if you click under Superintendent, you'll see an org chart there.
So if I go on our website and click under Superintendent, we will find the org chart?
Yes.
And it's a current one with our new staff?
Uh, it's the, it's the most current one right now.
When, when was it, I'm sorry? When was it last updated? 'Cause I remember that there was one, and we said that we, we're gonna have an updated one, because it wasn't too clear, the last one we saw.
So I believe we put this one up about a s- a few months ago. Uh, I'll have to look at the exact date, but I gave it to staff direction to say, look, everybody's asking for org charts.
Okay.
So go under the Superintendent one. That was not the one that, uh, we included that was never there before until I said, let's make sure that this is included there, so.
Can we, um, make sure it's easily accessible? 'Cause I have heard from the community that it is difficult to find, so if we could maybe just give us like a little click tree of just where to find it, and then make sure it is in a, an easy-to-find spot?
Absolutely. The, the entire website is being re-overhauled right now. In November, it'll be a lot more clear, but for the current situation, we'll take what's there and try to make it.
Yeah, maybe just make a, a homepage link so, somewhere that's just easy to find.
Okay.
I'm requesting a little more detail, so not just, uh, a framework in regards to board superintendent. I really wanna see functions under each area. Okay, so that's a little bit different, more involved?
Yes.
I've seen them before, and other districts have it.
Yeah, so we'll, so if you, uh, what, what everybody's working on right now, for the, when we see a new website, you'll see each, you're, you're gonna have to have the org chart that has the different people, names and numbers on it, without the descriptions, because that'd be too hard unless we create a situation in which we able to click on one of those boxes, and then you have the job description.
Point of order, I, I think that it'd be, um, to bring it up at a, a, an, uh, future meeting, right? So, you're presenting it as new business, potential new, yeah.
Okay.
Um, point of order, I am still really confused about the new business. Those things that we're directing you guys to do, I thought this was for policies that you wanted to get on the agenda to vote on. Am I confused, or can someone give me another explanation? Or do we just get to say, like, I want you to do this, and I want you to do that? How does this work?
So, it's supposed to work that a motion is brought up for an item to be discussed at a future board meeting, or a policy to be amended, and then a vote is taken, and that item is given as direction to staff to bring to a future meeting.
So, asking for an organizational chart is not a policy that we would have a new business, correct?
You could ask as a motion to bring up discussion for a new organizational chart at a future meeting, and it'll be brought up under the discussion item. So, a motion would be an order, followed by a vote of, uh, of the board to bring that to a future meeting.
So, new business can be a discussion item or a policy?
It could be a discussion item, action item, anything that a board member wants to, to bring up at a future agenda item.
So, anything we wanna talk about?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Thank you, General Counsel.
So, I, I would like to make a motion at this point, that the board look at, um, revising our org chart.
Uh, question. Revising, revision of org chart, meaning, there's something called reorganization, meaning I do an overhaul of job description changes. Are, are you talking about that? Because that's a long process. Or are you talking about the current structure with the names and all that? 'Cause when you say, I want, we, we wanna discuss about a new org chart, and that, that's a function of the staff that has to go through whole change of the whole, uh, or- organizational dynamics of the district.
Right, so some community members say, well, I don't know what Dr. Avila does.
Oh, that, that, the chart, yeah, the organizational chart we can.
See what I'm saying? And so, then it would outline, well, he, he covers these areas in student services. Bonnie does this in these areas. Um, our, for example, um, Dina, she does in regards to IT. What, what areas does she cover in IT?
Yeah.
Just that, that's.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know if we need a, uh, put it this way, I don't know if you need a discussion on that piece. Actually, you're just telling the superintendent, get an org chart up there, and that's what it is. I don't think you need a discussion for that.
And point of order, are we now discussing what's supposed to be on the agenda, and is this, are we doing this the right way? 'Cause again, I'm still confused.
So, so discussion.
Counsel, please, thank you.
So, clarification on any question by staff as to the, the direction of the discussion that will be brought up at the next meeting is acceptable, but actually discussing what action to take on that item would not be appropriate during new business.
Thank you.
So, is there a motion to bring up the organizational cha- chart for discussion on our next?
I'm like Amy, I'm totally confused at this point. I just introduced it, and I, then I started getting questions, and so I started, we started answering, and then Dr. Dadi kept asking questions, so I don't know. Where are we?
A motion has been made, it would need a second, followed by a vote to bring it up as a discussion item on a future agenda.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. El Hessen?
Aye.
Mrs. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the motion?
The motion that we have on the floor, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, is to bring up the organizational chart for discussion on our next agenda.
Right, okay. Uh, aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Any other new business?
Yes, Madam President, um, I'd like to make a motion that we bring for a future discussion the creation of a Bellflower Unified School District Foundation. Uh, the matter requires detailed discussion regarding formation and operation. As such, board deliberation would be an appropriate and necessary, um, act, given that we are the body that would ultimately decide those details.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. El Hessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Any other items for new business? So, in hearing none, um, I believe, uh, Dr. Dadi, um, I think we're done on that side. Let's move to major action.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is CSBA Contract for Three Hundred Sixty Self-Evaluation Workshop. Dr. Dadi, do we have any information on this item?
Yes, um, yes, the, the approval in the CSBA contract for the board three sixty evaluation to be conducted on November eleventh is, 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 uh, is, is the contract we, uh, uh, initiate with CSBA. Uh, the whole concept is to, uh, on November eleventh, I think I have an agreement to be able to establish the meeting at that time. Uh, so, so it'll go from nine o'clock to three o'clock with lunch and breakfast. Uh, but, uh, it's a workshop to help us deliberate about functions with the board, how we work together and all that. For example, some of the questions about new business and how we conduct, we will be addressed at that time. So, the hope is that we come out of there with clarity around how we best work together, uh, with each other, and then with staff, and so on. So, this is a contract, uh, agreement we have with CSBA to conduct, uh, the, the, the event.
Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Board Member Armstrong?
Um, I, I have a, my question is, um, this training from CSBA, um, while they provide, uh, guidance, are, I mean, I, my question is, is, is are we gonna be receptive to what CSB has to say, since we are the board and they aren't? So, are we gonna respect CSB enough, CSBA enough to, you know, receive the information? Because CSBA, you know, they, they have a lot of stuff in order for boards to use. And, um, I'm bringing it up because sometimes when we say CSBA, it's, it's brought up that, oh, well, it's, it's CSBA, we are the board, and we don't have to do what they say do. So, we're gonna have to really commit, and especially if we're gonna be spending this money and this time to commit to respect CSB enough to be receptive to the training. That's all.
Thank you, Board Member Armstrong. Board Member El Hessen?
Uh, yeah, I was agreeing with Ms. Armstrong. If we don't wanna use their policies, then are we gonna follow through with their, um, board governance guidelines?
Thank you, Board Member El Hessen. Board Member Stewart?
Um, I think we voted for it, so it sounds like we'll be pretty receptive for it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Stewart. Board Member Crichfield?
Um, yeah, uh, just to, to those points, 'cause I, I, I see what you're getting at. Um, so, when we talk about CSBA, I think it's very important to identify, like, respecting and, uh, being receptive, but also understand that they don't make the decision of the board, but being receptive of it, I think it's very, I think it's evident that we all do. And also, I mean, just even going, I'm actually looking forward to the next CSBA conference, I think we're all going. I think there's a lot of, a lot of valuable information, and I actually had the opportunity to hear from the, the lady uh, in talking about the evaluation, I was very impressed. Um, but I did have one question, is this gonna be in tandem with the superintendent evaluation? 'Cause I know that that was kind of like in the discussion at first.
Yes, uh, yes, uh, it, it, the superintendent evaluation won't occur on that day. Um, but they will be the, uh, but we have a contract with them to help facilitate the evaluation of the process for the superintendent as well.
So, that'd be a separate contract?
So, but the two go hand in hand, because in order to, in order to evaluate the work of the superintendent, you guys have to be on the same page. Otherwise.
We're getting there.
Superintendent won't know where, which board, which board member to follow, you know?
I don't know, I'm, I'm for it, but I, but I do think that'll be very valuable, and I, I am really looking forward to doing it with, uh, everybody. It's great.
Thank you, Board Member Crichfield. Um, I wanna remind the whole board that we go around and take turns, so that way, everybody has a turn to be heard, and that if it is not our turn, to please keep your comments to yourself until I go back and I give you another turn. Um, so, with that said, I wanna make sure that I address some of the com- com- concerns brought up tonight. Um, it is true that I have brought that up, and that is just me, because I agree with what Board Member Crichfield is saying. We do need to make decisions on our own. That does not mean that we do not take the guidance of CSBA. We accept it, and then we make those decisions, and I still stand by that statement. So, I invite Board Member El Hessen and Board Member Armstrong. If you would like to have a conversation and see exactly where I stand, and I can give you some more clarification about that, we can go ahead and make that decision ourselves and set a time. So, thank you very much. Um, we will now, um, any more staff? Thank you.
Excuse me, I just wanna respond. I just wanna say thank you for making it very clear, 'cause I wasn't clear how you, how you stood. I wasn't trying to, you know, hit you and make you holler, but, um, I just want, I just want you to know, because it's an organization that it's there for, for our taking, okay? So, that, that is, that was my, my motive. I wanna go. CSBA does a lot. You, we all know that. That's all. So, thanks for being very clear. Thank you.
I have a comment too. I would also like to thank you for respecting them and understanding that just because we disagree on one thing that CSBA says or recommends doesn't mean that we disagree with everything that CSBA does, and that we can differentiate between the different things we're talking about, which is policies and a board self-evaluation. So, thank you, President Garza, for acknowledging that.
Thank you, Board Members. Um, roll call, please.
Can we get a motion in a second, please?
I make the motion.
Second.
Okay.
Now, roll call, please. Thank you.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
And Dr. El Hessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. We now move into the consent agenda. Do any board members, any members of the board have any requests to withhold any agenda items this evening?
I like to hold, um, withhold fifteen point three and fifteen point fourteen.
Board Member El Hessen?
No.
Board Member Stewart?
No.
Board Member Crichfield?
No.
And I have none withholding as well. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, except for the items fifteen point three and fifteen point four, which have been pulled for separate consideration?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Crichfield, and second by Board Member Arm, um, Stewart. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. El Hessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Going back to the items pulled for separate consideration, first agenda item is fifteen point three, which has been pulled by Board Member Armstrong. Do I have a motion on this item?
So moved.
I, I second.
I have a motion by Board Member Stewart, and a second by Board Member Armstrong. Board Member Armstrong, what are your comments or concerns?
I, I just have a few questions. Um, on fifteen point thirteen, um, can you explain to me the, the big jump in the cost for the, the mind education? I'm talking about the mind education. For the Mind Institute for Parent Education Workshops and the Small Group Tutoring. Uh, it's, it's such a big jump. I just wanna know what's going on.
I don't think that's the right one. Are we on page two?
On page.
Ms. Armstrong, were you pulling fifteen point three or fifteen point thirteen? I believe you're talking about fifteen point thirteen.
That's what I'm talking about right now.
Yeah, so it was fifteen point thirteen that I believe you wanted to pull. I think it was on the record as fifteen point thirteen.
I thought I said fifteen point thirteen.
On the record, it was fifteen point three and fifteen point four, but it sounds like you want fifteen point.
Man, I said three and four.
It's okay.
Gee, Wilkers.
She did say fifteen point fourteen. It was fifteen point three and fif- fifteen point fourteen on the record, but it sounds like it's fifteen point thirteen and fifteen point fourteen.
All right, yeah, that's, that's what I meant. It's these pages right here, y'all.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, staff. Um, General Counsel?
We gotta go back. Do we need to go back?
So, there'd be a need for a motion to reconsider item fifteen point thirteen, and you can do a motion to pass item fifteen point three.
I'm, I have a motion to, to, uh, I, I have a motion to pass fifteen point three.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. El Hessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye.
And, and, I have a motion to reconsider fifteen point thirteen. No, fifteen point thirteen, fourteen is fine.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. El Hessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. So, now going back to the items pulled for separate consideration, first item is fifteen point thirteen, which has been pulled by Board Member Armstrong. Do I have a motion on the item?
So moved.
I second.
I have a motion by Board Member Armstrong, and a second by Board Member Crichfield. Uh, sorry. First, um, a motion by Board Member Crichfield, and a second by Board Member Armstrong. Board Member Armstrong, what are your comments and concerns?
Thank you, and again, I apologize, 'cause I, I really thought I said the number's right, but oh, well. Um, I just had a few questions, because, um, I, I see such a big jump in the, for the re- renewal, and I, I, I know it has to be something amazing, and I just need to know what's going on.
So, for the Mind Institute, it's not a renewal, it's additional services. So, we're looking to, and it's an up to eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. It's, um, looking at after-school and summertime small group tutoring, uh, which would be delivered by, uh, the Mind Institute and actual teachers, like, on Zoom with small groups of students.
So, ma- mostly during the summer?
Uh, after-school.
After-school and summer?
Yeah, it'll be part of our Think Together program, and then part of our Summer Enrichment, uh, Expanded Learning Opportunities program.
Okay, so, um, is this something that's gonna be monitored by the parents? 'Cause it says parent education?
No, I'm not sure where the parent, oh, I see what you're saying. That's part of the renewal, and we have had parent educational workshops already, um, this year on ST Math, so that was part of the previous, uh, contract that we had with them. As far as monitoring, um, that's gonna be done during the Think Together program, before and after school and during summer.
And so, um, just to be clear, the people in the Think Together program, they're gonna be the ones providing this service?
No, it's mind research, so.
Okay, mind.
That's ST Math. That's Gigi, the Penguin.
The Penguin, okay, thanks.
We, yeah.
So, um, is there, do we have any other programs that is doing this, like, right? So is there, do we have any other programs that is doing this like right now? Are we making, you know, because these are, I mean, is, is this being duplicated or is this just expanded?
Not right now. We have interventions. We have ST math right now. We're utilizing it in our classrooms. Our teachers are using it with our students. But as far as targeted tutoring with the certified teacher online using their curriculum, we are not doing that right now.
Are our special education students going to benefit from this?
Any student that's involved in Think Together or after-school, summer, Expanded Learning Opportunity.
All right. All right. I'm loving it.
Board member Elhessen? Questions, comments?
It was clarified.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Board member Stewart?
I have a recommendation. We have our agenda and like it says fifteen point four, but it is so hard to find in our books. Like I am literally like searching and searching. Is there any way to number pages or put it at the top so we can find it like on the dais? Do you know what I mean? I understand the tabs. We went away, but it's really hard for me to find things in this book on the spot. I'm just bringing that. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Crichtfield?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have one question. I know you just mentioned it's up to eight hundred and fifty-five thousand. But some, some of the contracts have a do not to exceed and then the amount. Why does that one not have do not, not to exceed? Is there a difference when, when putting them on this chart? Which ones you would put not to exceed and which ones you wouldn't?
No.
Go ahead.
No, it's just the way that the department has submitted it based on their division.
Okay.
What it would mean is that basically you couldn't exceed that amount because that's what the board has given approval for.
So should the not to exceed just be implied on all of them and, okay.
Unless you have a set fee for what that contract's going to be.
Okay. And if we were ever to go, if we were to ever go above this, we would have contract amendments, right?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions myself. My questions have been answered by staff. Yes.
President Garza, I have one more question. So concerned about this, how is this, how is this being funded? Like is this coming from like the general fund?
This is coming from our ESAR or CARES funds.
Oh, we got to spend that.
We do.
We got to spend that. Okay. Is there a way that, how are we going to assess whether or not this is really going to be working though? And then I'll be done.
We are looking at the kiddos that we're utilizing this with. We're looking at our NWEA scores to first target our students. So we'll be able to see that progress in their future NWEA scores.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Elhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichtfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. The next item pulled for separate consideration is agenda item fifteen point fourteen, pulled by board member Armstrong. Is there a motion on the item?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by board member Armstrong and a second by board member Crichtfield. Board member Armstrong, what are your comments or concerns?
Sorry, I motioned.
Sorry. I'm not hitting one this evening. Sorry about that. Motion by board member Stewart and a second by board member Crichtfield.
This is the one, the, it says, the Focus Care. The, it says Focus Care Provide Online Target, Targeted Tutoring by Credential Teachers for K-12 Students. My question is, is pretty much like the same thing. Do we, do we need that?
This is going to be targeted towards our fifth to eighth grade students. So we're looking more at our middle school. We're also in this one looking, and it is online, one-on-one, not small group tutoring. So it's more intensive. And it's based off our NWEA scores again. And they're looking at the gaps that our students have to try to fill those gaps again after-school and during summer.
After-school and during summer. So the reason why I'm asking is because y'all know I have my kids. And I can remember my one student, my one daughter was talking about, she was having difficulty with her math. And she kept asking the questions over and over for this, you know, to try to get clarification. And I, and the teacher just told her to go to the paper tutoring, you know. And so she's like, but I'm asking a teacher. I don't, I don't want her to just send me the paper tutoring. So I just want to make sure that we have all these extra supports, you know, these supplemental supports for our students. But we need to make sure that the teachers do their, you know, due diligence, you know, to really help the students and don't just say, okay, you have this online resource. So are the teachers, are, are the teachers going to know about this program to even help the kids facilitate? Say, you know, hey, this is the, you know, the best I can do. You can practice. I, I don't know whether, it could have just been the exchange. But I, I want the teachers to be sensitive to the students if they're not so comfortable.
Well, and there's a little difference as well is that both of these programs are going to be used during after-school and summertime. So what I hear you saying is that if these programs were used during the school day with our teachers, that yes, they would be involved in that discussion and know the best practices for utilizing this kind of program during the school day. However, that's not what this is going to be right now. So it will be with our Think Together staff. So this is actually a more highly qualified person in the after-school and summer enrichment time helping with that tutoring of math.
Actually, that's, that's a great idea. So we're really beefing up after-school and summertime enrichment. So thank you.
Let me just, let me just add though. I know you mentioned how do we, how are we going to know how effective this program is? One of the, we're obviously going to see how, how their, the students are gaining, gaining after they look at NWA results and all that. One of the things I want to ask Mrs. Carter to monitor that we need to monitor is the coordination between the handoff between the school and after-school program and support. So for example, the NWA results are the responsibility of the district staff, teachers and so on. When there's a need identified there, is a teacher connected with the after-school program organization to say, hey, go over here and make sure that you catch up on this. So that way is, it's not just a disconnected, you go do tutoring here while we learn over here. That is, it's actually connected. The bridge is the NWA results. But we have to be active about making sure that we, we communicate between, once we get the results from the staff to the after-school program to say, there has to be that connection there. If we get to that point and there's, there's that handoff and there's that coordination, I think that's when it's going to really excel the way we want it to excel. But it, it will excel in itself already, but it'll be even more if that coordination occurs.
Okay, so, so that, that, that really answers because it's really distinctive, after-school and summer. So about, I don't know, about how many kids are, you know, about a percentage, I love you, Ms. Carter. About, you know, about how many kids is, you know, is in our after-school programs and in our summer program? I mean, because it, it's wonderful, about, you know, twenty-five percent, I don't know.
I'm going to have to get you that information. I typically have that, but we, our after-school programs, this is great news, has grown a lot this year, actually. And you see that in the contract matrix because we've had to increase our staffing at six different sites. And so we have a lot more students. I don't want to give you a number because I learned once, the first thing you learn is what sticks. So I don't want to give you wrong information. So I'll put it in the Friday memo, how many kiddos we have.
Okay, so, but one thing for sure, we are going to get our money's worth.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And to Dr. Jodi's point, we do have liaisons that are part of our Think Together program. So we have teachers at each one of our sites. That's a liaison that works with our district staff and Think Together to help with that coordination. But he's absolutely right. It does take believing in the NWE assessment and ensuring that students know the purpose for it and that it's there to help us understand the gaps that they have so we can help fill them. So that will give us good information to be able to provide the resources and interventions that they need.
Well, I absolutely appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, board member Armstrong. Board member Elhessen?
No, it's answered. Thank you.
Board member Stewart?
Yeah, I have a few questions. One, I know when the question was asked of who runs this and who supports this, they are going to the Think Together program for this, correct?
Students that are attending the Think Together program after-school.
Are they all going as a group? Because I know we're paying Think Together to do enrichment activities and things like that. So are we paying them to just sit and watch these kids online or are they like, if they want to use it or is the whole group going? How is that working?
Good question. No, it's going to be structured. So they'll have times within the Think Together schedule. We've, our staff member, Ms. Swanson, has been working with the Think Together staff to look at their schedule so that we have designated times where all of the students will be part of this. It will not be an optional piece to the Think Together program. But it'll be tied in with all the other things that they're doing.
Got it. Okay, awesome. And then my next question is just, again, can we receive data as well? You know, when they get that data of how many users are using it and things like that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, board member Stewart. Board member Crichtfield?
No additional questions.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. It says here that tutoring will be provided by our credential teachers for K through 12. Are these our, like, credential teachers right now in our schools?
They're not. Our, our teachers in our schools have the opportunity to provide after-school intervention to our students. However, these are credential teachers in the ST math and the FEV platform.
So are our credential teachers, do they have the opportunity to maybe participate in this program to give that tutoring?
I think I need clarity on that question. What do you mean?
So you're saying that our credential teachers have the option to give tutoring on their own on campus?
They have the ability to provide intervention at their school site after-school. That would be a site-based decision. So they would talk to their principal about having that.
So then are teachers, are, are credential teachers are not involved with this program at all?
They're not part of the ST math or FEV program, no.
Okay. Have we decided what we're going to do if we have more students than the credential teachers provided?
For the platforms?
Yes.
That's the first question I asked. So they've assured us that, I said, what if I need a hundred at one time? And they've said that they would be able to meet that capacity.
Great.
So I can't wait to see it.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much for everything you've done to put this together. Anyone else? Questions, comments?
I just had a follow-up question. If the teachers are doing this after-school tutoring, is it always ELOP? Or are we using different funding and they're getting paid differently? Or how is that working at each site?
It depends on what's being provided. So at the site level, they're more than likely going to use their supplemental concentration funding for after-school intervention. For Expanded Learning Opportunities program, which is the Think Together program, the summer program, we would utilize Expanded Learning Opportunities grant funding.
I know with the ELOP funding right now, like, would it be wise to not use those funds and use the ELOP funds? Because they can be used for intervention and enrichment. Do you know what I'm asking?
No, I think I need clarity on that, but I, I did want to add one piece because it might answer your question. For example, this funding here, when board member Armstrong asked how it was funded, it's funded through ESAR funds. So we utilize those funds because they're not going to be around by 2024. So we're going to utilize those funds first. If it's a successful program and platform and we want to continue it, then we would look at using Expanded Learning Opportunity grant funding for it the following years.
Okay.
Does that help answer your question?
Kind of. I just, I know ELOP funds can be used for so many different things and tutoring and intervention is obviously something we want, you know, to get our, our scores up. So I'm just wondering why we're not utilizing those as intervention and tutoring at certain sites after-school and we're using that supplemental concentration funding. Like, I'm just wondering what's the benefit of using either one of them or do you know?
Well, I guess here's how I could answer. Every site has the opportunity to have students in the after-school program and think to be part of this program. However, if a school site decides to provide a different intervention, not this math intervention, but some other intervention, maybe it's foundational skills, word study intervention, they'll utilize their supplemental concentration funding for that.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was wondering too, because we were talked about getting our teachers involved in tutoring, you know, with their own kids and things like that. So they would use those funds. Thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Thank you, board members. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Armstrong?
Aye.
Dr. Elhessen?
Aye.
Ms. Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Crichtfield?
Aye.
Mrs. Garza?
Aye. Thank you. We've moved on to informational items. Does the board have any questions regarding the informational items this evening? Hearing none. The board will not be going back into closed session. If there is no objection, this meeting is adjourned at 8:04 until the special board meeting to be held on Thursday, October 26th. At this time, the board, have a nice evening. Thank you.